I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Plymouth School Committee. Today is October 3rd, and first, we'd like to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everybody. First, we'd like to welcome any comments from the public. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the school reports. And let's do Max Tripp from Plymouth North High School.
Hi, everyone. Okay, that's kind of a lot. College lunch visits, I know I talked about this last time. We've been hosting college lunch visits for all four lunches these past couple of weeks. These visits are for students to speak with representatives from the college or university in order to learn more information about what each has to offer. A full listing of the colleges that have visited already and future visiting colleges and universities, as well as armed services, are all listed on the website and the Daily Bulletin. Life Touch Sports Pictures will be taken Friday, October 21st, and Student Pitcher Retakes will be Thursday, November 3rd during K Block. Senior College Planning and Financial Aid Night, the Plymouth High School's Senior College and Financial Aid Night will be held Wednesday, October 5th, from 6:30 to 8:00 PM at Plymouth South High School. Voter Registration, students eligible to vote are encouraged to see any social studies teacher for a voter registration form, or go online to mass.gov, click on Government, then on Voting. You must be registered by October 19th in order to vote in this presidential election. The 2017 Prudential Spirit of Community Awards, have you participated in community service activities over the past year? If so, you may be eligible to win the President's Volunteer Service Award. Students can fill out the application online and find more information. The deadline is November 8th. We had our freshman elections recently. Congratulations to the freshman class officers, Class President Jack Freeman, Vice President Kristen Barrett, Treasurer Alexandra Antonino, and Secretary Josh Brown. We just had our homecoming dance on Saturday night. We had over 650 students in attendance. Congratulations to the King Jake Burkhead and Queen Leanne Galonick. And the remainder of the people that were on the court were Jordan Costa, Hannah Strohschneider, Molly McKenna, Isabel Kirstead, Tommy Newian, Talis Noons, Craig Christani, and Matt Withington. Students traveled to the JFK Library in Boston to take advantage of a workshop regarding Kennedy's role in the Cold War, focusing on Berlin, Cuba, and the space race. The JFK Library is a great resource for schools to be able to take advantage of their educational offerings. Students also visited the Korean War Memorial located at Castle Island. Progress Reports, parents are encouraged to view their students' Aspen accounts to monitor their students' progress. A letter was sent to any student in danger of failing any subject. MCAS Parent Reports were mailed home on Friday, September 30th, with results from May and June 2016 MCAS tests. MCAS retests for any student that has not yet passed begin in the month of November. That's all.
Thank you. And now Plymouth South High School, Brianna Johnson.
So, our open house will be this Thursday at 7:00 PM. Parents will have the opportunity to travel to all of their child's Semester One classes and communicate with teachers. At the same time, Student Council will be holding their semi-annual Savers Clothing Drive. Please help out and drop off any clothes, books, or other household items that you may have. Wednesday night will be the Senior College Planning and Financial Aid Night at Plymouth South. If you have any questions about the FASSA, it is strongly recommended that you attend. This Saturday, Plymouth Marching Band will have a show at Wakefield Memorial High School. On Wednesday, October 12th, the class of 2019 is having a fundraiser at Panera. A portion of their sales will directly benefit the class. And next Friday, the 14th, is Oktoberfest for seniors. Shirts and tickets are on sale now at all lunches. The cost is $20, or $10 if you do not want the T-shirt. And congratulations to the T-shirt design winners, Rachel Bond and Christina Hanley. The Booster Club will be having its annual Sam Frye Road Race on October 16th in order to raise funds for athletics. And the PSAT and SAT Day is on Wednesday, October 19th. At the same time, all freshmen will be traveling to the Museum of Science. Homecoming is on October 22nd. Tickets will be on sale in the coming weeks. And Meet the Coaches Night for Unified Sports is tomorrow night at 6:30. And lastly, we are extremely happy to announce that the Plymouth South has earned a place on the 2015 to 2016 MIAA Sportsmanship Honor Roll.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have anything, any comments or questions? Great, thank you. Next, we have old business. And I know last meeting, we went through item by item. So, does anybody have anything on old business that they want to talk about or close out? I don't think we need to go through it again. How about new business? Does anyone have anything for new business? Dr. Swanson?
Actually, I want to just bring up this topic. And it may not really, it may not be particularly germane to the school committee, but I want to use the forum at least. A number of families in the town of Plymouth have donated soccer equipment, cleats, and balls, and soccer clothing. And through some, through my sons who are involved in soccer, they've identified a high school in Costa Rica to receive this, these three simple boxes. Boxes that reams of paper would come in, you know the size of box we're talking about. So, anyway, they brought it to UPS here in Plymouth, prepared to pay out of pocket maybe the $150 to mail it. And they found out to mail three boxes to Costa Rica, it will cost $2,200. Needless to say, they couldn't mail the three boxes. So, I bring it up here in case somebody watching the school committee has a vehicle by which we can get this information, these boxes, to the high school in Costa Rica. And I also know that we approved a field trip here some months ago to Costa Rica. Now, that may be an imposition to ask the field trip, but perhaps they have a contact. But mailing them is absurd. So, I bring it up, and I use the forum for that purpose. Thank you.
I know that too, Mass Maritime, last year, their sea term went to Costa Rica. So, we should find out where they're going this year. That's an idea as well. Anybody else? Okay, great. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Miestis.
Yes, tonight, I have a few items to report on. Just for your calendars, tomorrow at 2:00, I'm not sure if you're available, there's a topping off ceremony at the Town Hall. So, the last beam will be, steel beam will be erected tomorrow at 2:00 PM. So, that's something that's happening around the town. Also, just for your calendars, Town Meeting's October 15th, all day, Plymouth North High School. Don't know how things will go as far as the duration of the meeting, but I have Town Meeting motions Wednesday, and also Town Meeting Preview Thursday night to get an idea of the complexities of Town Meeting. And again, for calendar items, MAS, CMAS joint conference is November 2nd through 5th. So, I think there are several people are registered, school committee members and my staff, some of us will be there. Had the opportunity to, you know, I go to South High School campus a lot, and had the opportunity to go through the north wing. And it's pretty amazing to see the work has moved along. There's, the drywall's up, it's already been painted. And so, if, you know, when you kind of consider where we were, and to see where we are, you know, this time last year, we were, we were not even thinking about it. And to see all this moving along quickly is pretty amazing. So, things are moving well with South on schedule. And also, the last item I have to report, which is really an old business item, but just something that I'm working on, which is taking some time, is the speeds, the speed limit and stop sign activity that we're going through. It's pretty complex because, you know, I've asked every principal to identify where stop signs are, and it's amazing where stop signs should be where they aren't at all, in many instances. So, there'll be a number of signs that will be recommended to the committee. I anticipate in the next couple of weeks, we should have in front of the committee to have a go at it, and take a look at it, and then we'll get recommendations from the town. So, that will come before the committee, and I would say within two weeks. With that said, turn it back to you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Dr. Miestis? Nope. Okay, seeing none, we will move on. Next is retirements. And Mrs. Burgess? Oh, actually, no, I'm sorry. Mrs. Fry.
We've won retirement this year, Darlene Verzona, Para Educator from West. Congratulations on our 22 years of service.
Thank you. And Mrs. Burgess?
And on behalf of the school committee, I'd like to say thank you to Darlene for 22 years of service to our schools, and wish her well on her retirement.
Well, she'll appreciate that.
All right, next, we have correspondence. Mrs. Burgess? You're next. You're doing more work than I am today.
I don't know. Anyway, we have one piece of correspondence. It's from the Falmouth Public Schools, the Office of the Superintendent, and it's addressed to Superintendent Miestis. "As you know, there's an increasing body of research highlighting how adolescent's sleep-wake cycle drastically changes as their bodies mature, making it difficult for many adolescents to function early in the day. A complementary body of research into whether later school start times result in additional sleep for adolescents suggests that such adjustments are one effective way for students to get more sleep. The Falmouth School Committee has established a School Start Times Task Force," that's a mouthful, "to gain a full understanding of the district's and greater community's commitment to altering school start times, and if appropriate, to determine the action steps, resources, changes necessary in the short and long term to effect the change. Any change to school start times will have impacts reaching far beyond the Falmouth community. And for this reason, we're hosting an educational forum to discuss this issue and actions surrounding communities and athletic league partners that may be considering. We invite you, members of your administration and school committee, athletic directors, and other interested members of your community, to join us on Monday evening, October 24th. This will be a great opportunity to share information, ideas, and feedback on this important issue." And they want us to RSVP by October 20. And it's best regards, Nancy Taylor, Superintendent of Schools." And there's a list, too, at the bottom, of many other towns. It seems to be the South Shore, Cape Cod, and into southeastern Mass, that she's invited to join with them.
Sure, your Madam Chair.
Okay. And is this an action item?
This is an action item, but should we find out if anyone's available?
I just want to make a comment, just want to make, if I may, an ironic comment, that there are studies, certainly that talk about when an adolescent is at the peak cognitive abilities, and it is later on in the day.
Yes.
However, the same studies, or similar studies, show us that adults peak early in the morning.
Not this one. I guess I'm still an adolescent.
We have to decide who we want sharper, the kids or the teachers.
So, before we make a motion whether or not to participate in this, we probably should find out if anybody's available to attend that day. I think I might be.
And I might be.
And you might be as well.
Yeah, I would be, yeah.
So, do we have?
As long as we don't have a meeting.
A motion on the table to participate in this?
I'll make a motion to participate in the study.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
The motion is sort of really boil plate, but personally, I don't think we need a motion for a school committee member to attend an invitational meeting. So, I'm probably not going to vote in favor of the motion for that reason.
Okay.
Do we leave the motion on the table then?
It's on the floor, it's been seconded.
It's on the floor, you can either vote, you can vote it down, we can vote it down if we wish. But it is, but it is true that we're not making a motion to support later start times for high school students, so.
Yeah.
We're only saying somebody's going.
We're just sending somebody there.
Sending, or anybody can go.
Do we want to take back the motion, or do we just vote on it?
The maker and the second can withdraw.
Yeah.
You can withdraw your motion.
I was told it was an action item before the meeting, so I.
Oh.
That's the reason.
I can withdraw the motion?
Okay, and I withdraw it, too.
All right. So, then, we'll just make accommodations on our own to.
To go.
All right, sounds good. All right.
Sorry.
And the agenda is South Elementary School. And we'll give them a few seconds to get ready. We'll hear the school improvement plan for South Elementary School. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thanks. I'd like to introduce the people that are with me. To my right, I have Linda Lonergan, she's our Computer Integration Specialist. To my left, I have Ashley Panetta, who's one of our ASD teachers, Carol Cahill, one of our moderate special needs teachers, and Crystal Danner, who's one of our parent representatives. We have a meeting, obviously, over the past several, several years to kind of review our last school improvement plan, and then develop our new one. When we were looking at developing our 2016, 2018 plan, there was a couple different focus that we wanted to look at. One of the major pieces was looking at building leadership in students, and then also in, also looking at 21st century skills, which I know we've talked about many, many years in Plymouth. During our 2015-16 year, what we did is, teachers really looked at when they're working with their students in curriculum-wise, looking at things like supporting their responses with evidence from the text, explaining their reasoning. That was really a huge focus during the past school year. And I think that, in a second, when we look at some academic results, I think that really paid off. But that was really a focus across the board with many, many teachers in the building. A lot of our teachers last year really focused on working with our literacy and math coaches, and they really tried to get into the classrooms. There was quite a bit of professional development, and the teachers really enacted that in their classrooms as well. One of the things that we did is, myself and my assistant principal, we did walkthroughs, and we presented walkthrough data to the staff, what we found. We looked at things like, are we following the reading and writing calendar, so are we following the math calendar? And we presented that to the staff, whether we saw that in the classrooms or not. We looked at, was there evidence of differentiation? So, those are some of the things that we did during last school year. This school year, we're really focusing on the same type of things. And we're also looking at our grade level meetings, really looking at, looking at student work, and how are students doing, and talking about what student, what we're going to do next with students. During our staff meetings, we're really looking at the leader in me, and fostering the leader in me in our schools. One of the things that I talked about was just looking at our PARC data, and kind of looking at what we did last year, and I think it really paid off. When you look at our growth percentiles for our students, last year, we had 55, we reached the 55th percentile. This year, we were looking at 71 percent, the 71 percentile in ELA. And then in math, we were, last year, we looked at 43, and this year, we looked at 62. When you look at our PARC scores over the past year, grade three in math, we showed an 8% increase. When you're looking at meeting and exceeding, when you're combining those two, ELA, we looked at 11% increase. Math, for grade four, we had an 18% increase. And in ELA, we had a 9% increase. We still have a way to go, but we had quite a bit of growth in the last year. Looking at the next two years, what are our focus? But it's really looking at leadership, respect, student ownership, problem-solving skills, application of skills, and community service learning. So, this was really the focus of most of our conversations throughout our school council meetings, and this is what we really developed our goals from. Our first goal was really look, is looking at building a culture of leadership, respect, and student ownership. Really looking at the social-emotional needs of students. We, as I think we talked about before, we really looked at implementing the leader in me in our school. We developed a lighthouse team of staff, and that, that lighthouse team really looks at guiding the path, where are we going, what are our next steps, what are our focus? During September, there were three pieces that they focused on and asked all classroom teachers to do. This month, they've done the same thing. They picked three focus for the month of October, and asked all classroom teachers to do. And there's, a lot of the things are things that they've done in the past, but they really wanted teachers to focus on certain things, and that's what we did. One of the things that we've also asked people to do is integrate, integrate the language into their daily lessons. Not necessarily make it something else, but integrate it into, if they're reading a story, use the language of the leader in me and the seven habits in the questions that they're asking students. Big buddies and little buddies. I don't know, Crystal, if you have any of your student, children doing big buddies, little buddies, that they've talked about at all, but they've really tried to inter, we've tried to do more experiences with big buddies and little buddies, and their more curriculum experiences, so we're trying to build the community itself. I don't know, Crystal, if you wanted to.
Yeah, both of my girls, excuse me, have had a big buddy throughout the school, and it would be the highlight of their week Friday morning. They would so look forward to the special activity, and I feel like it was a really good strength exercise for them. And now that they, it was such a success for them being the little buddy.
Can you move the mic down a little bit?
My.
Oh, there's a handheld there that might, if you just, yeah, that would probably help. That'd be easier for you. Maybe not.
So, now, my oldest daughter is going into, well, she's in third grade, so now she's preparing to be a big buddy, and she's been talking about it with something that she really looked forward to. So, I think it's going to be very fun and interesting to see her take that leadership role.
And a lot of those experiences are more curriculum-based now, and so, and the students will really look forward to those. The other day, we had our fourth graders leading our kindergartners through the building, trying to find different things. Totally student-led, the teachers, the classroom teachers are around in the halls, but again, student-led. One of the other things that we're looking at as we're doing morning meetings with our grade levels, we're trying to do twice a month, to really reinforce what the expectations are, to really, again, build community in the building. Other, another leadership role that students are taking on, we do our morning news live every morning, so there, it's broadcast through all the televisions every morning. But again, it's really trying to build that leadership role of the students in, in the building. Our second goal gets into develop problem-solving, application of skills, and student ownership of learning. One of the things that we've asked all staff to do is try to create learning goals, goals with our students. Students are creating goals, and they post them, and they're really trying to make those goals deeper and deeper. Some are just developing goals for the year. We have one of my, one of our teachers that I know specifically that's developing new goals every single week. And those students, they're really trying to evaluate whether they're, they're meeting their goals or not. We're also looking at publicizing some of our data in the hallway, our attendance data, our PARC data, and other goals that we have as well. Technology, Linda, do you want to talk a little bit about technology?
Well, as you know, the district is really doing well with their technology integration here in Plymouth. We are using Chromebooks on a regular daily basis in almost every grade level. Second graders are in Google Classroom this year, very exciting. They're learning how to problem-solve and navigate their way through, through their classes, through Google Classroom. We have just purchased Wixi, which is a wonderful program, and the clever badge system for K through 2, and we're working diligently to get that up and running very shortly. The students are really becoming more comfortable with technology. It's taking students, I noticed a huge difference between last year and this year, as far as them getting into Google Classroom and typing in their IDs and their passwords, so the progress is, is being made. Students are learning how to be more creative with it and have fun with technology, and they're enjoying it. And they're learning how to problem-solve with technology. We, in our school, we have mission statements that the students, I, we all had the students create the mission statements for each class. And one of them, one of the statements in my classroom with technology was, "We learn by doing. We help others by pointing and showing, but not doing for them." And that, "We learn how to take control of our learning, and we problem-solve and try." So, the students really, they came up with all of those statements, and they are putting them into action.
One of our, one of the other pieces that we're looking at trying to do is looking at student-initiated learning. Our fourth grade is starting to do research projects at the end of every school year, and the, the topics are completely developed by them. The teachers do have some parameters on what they're looking for, but the topics and the research is completely developed by them. One of the other pieces, a lot of our teachers have taken one of the courses offered by our math coaches in regards to problem-solving, and one of the strategies that a lot of them are using is taking out the question, giving them a problem, but leaving off the question, so the students really have to examine what is happening in the question, in the, in the problem presented. And the students, I was in a classroom the other day, and the students, after they dissected the problem, they created a question from the information that they gathered. And the question that the kids came up with was, was a more difficult question. It wasn't just how many, it was, there was a huge line, but it was, did the student make, the problem they came up with was, did the child make the bus on time? It was in regards to cooking cupcakes, and they had to get them to school, and they had a very short period of time, and it was, they came up with the question. But it was, really worked from what they had done, what the teachers had done through one of these classes that they took. And our final goal is engage in community service learning and develop an understanding of its impact. We have, over the past couple of years, we've really done many, many different community service projects. However, the piece that we kind of felt was left out was the why. Why are we doing these, and, and so forth? So, that's really the, kind of the next step in that goal, is why are we doing these community service learnings? What impact does it have? One of our fourth grade classrooms is looking at partnering with a nursing home, a local nursing home. They're trying to visit a couple times this year, but one of the things that the students came up with was wanting to do something every single month, whether it be writing letters, or sending care packages, or they wanted to do something every other, every month or so. They did not want to just do it a couple times a year. So, and that was completely driven by them. Anybody else want to comment?
About the roles. The roles.
Well, each grade level will also be determining what their project's going to be for the year. So, fourth grade decided they wanted to partner with the local nursing home.
You have a microphone?
Student-led learning is each grade level will be able to vote, come together, and decide what they're doing, but also the why, of why they chose that project, and what they want to do with it. And among that, as well, they have to elect their own roles, and assign their own roles amongst each other, of how they are going to accomplish their goals for that.
Those are our three goals for the upcoming, the next two years. And if you have any questions, be more than glad to answer them.
That's great, thank you. Anybody have any questions, comments? Great, good job.
Excellent job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and next, we have Mr. Hannah with the Career Vocational Technical Education. Welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Hannah and Mr. Baker are here tonight to provide information regarding the program updates, so welcome. I think, Mr. Hannah, you have three things in a row tonight.
Do you?
Oh, that's.
You can just sit there for a while.
It's news to me, Dr. Miestis. Well, thank you, everyone, and appreciate the opportunity for Chris and I to be here this evening to give you an update on career vocational education here in Plymouth. So, basically, what I'd like to do is just start off by sharing with you and reminding everyone what our programs and study are here in Plymouth. One thing that we are very excited about is that as we plan on our move to the new building, we have new CVTE programs that we'll be adding. So, we have medical assisting, HVAC, auto collision and repair. And we also are going to have some new career pathways in terms of our computer science program. And this is to attract more students into programming and web development. So, we have already started to roll out new program, new classes in Java, Code High School, and then we hope to add the Zulama curriculum. As we plan to make the move to the new building, Mr. Baker is going to share with you just a few things about what we're doing with the equipment, and going through our inventory to. what we're doing with the equipment and going through our inventory to try to prepare for that move.
Basically, right now, we're in the process of taking all the equipment that's been selected and and decided that we're bringing with us and going through it all, making sure everything's been serviced and is in in good condition and prepared to make the move. And marking it and categorizing it so it winds up where it's supposed to be. We're also in the process of making sure that whatever pieces we have could be utilized in in other areas within the program, that we use that and make the best use of that. And that's the, that's where we are in that process now.
As we look at the enrollment for 2016, 2017, we're exactly where we have been in the past five years. About half the population at Plymouth South High School is at about 550 students. And at Plymouth North, we're about 354. The CVTE graduates situation that we have currently is extremely positive. The positive placement definition is based on the overall Perkins Grant definition of where our students are now. Currently, we have 100% of our students in the class of 2014, which is our graduate follow-up survey that we do every year for the Department of Ed. And when we look at this overall, we try to maintain ourselves as saying, okay, where are our students after they graduate? So they're either in post-secondary education, they're in the military, they're employed. Specifically then, Chapter 74, which is obviously our approval program for Vocational Technical in the Commonwealth, looks at where our students are in terms of their job related to their field. So if they're not in college or they're not currently in a specific, specific trade, are they right now employed by an employer that they went through the entire program and studied? And that number, which has actually been very positive for us, is about 85%. As we look at our students after high school, we look at, trying to look at, one of the things that I'm getting confused here with my slides is non-traditional enrollment. And when we look at enrollment, we say, how are our students in the focusing on careers that are non-traditional bi-gender? And we always try to put a big push for this because when you go through, obviously exploratory or some of our programs at Plymouth North, our students have an opportunity to make sure. Are you guys seeing the flies like going around? So obviously, we try to focus on our non-traditional bi-gender enrollment. And this is really a positive placement for us in the sense that they clearly have been focusing on what is best for them. It doesn't necessarily have to be what everybody else is doing, but what is clearly best for them. The other thing that I wanted to mention about our vocational technical program here in Plymouth is that we have tremendous amounts of support from our community. When we look at our community, we certainly rely on the businesses and employers to provide opportunities for our students. At the high schools, both of the high schools, we offer academic electives in which our students that are not enrolled in career vocational programs can take and access. We also have a cooperative education internship program, which allows our students to go out into the workforce. Currently, we have 26 students that are on co-op, and that's between both North and South. And that also includes internships, as many of our early education and care students are at West Elementary School. One of the things that Chris and I have really been focusing on is trying to make sure that we have full day placements. What's nice about our new schedule is that we've been able to provide our students with every other day placement. So since we have the block schedule now, our students can actually go out to work early in the morning and spend the entire day there instead of having to go out late in the afternoon and go into the evening. So that has really been beneficial, especially for our students that are involved in after-school activities. We continue to build upon our articulation agreements with local colleges, specifically the community colleges. But as well with community colleges, we also do have four-year schools that provide college credit for our graduates once they complete a vocational technical program. Our recruiting continues to be very good. I'm very pleased to say that last year, we had a wonderful video that was done by Ed TV. The link is here. And if Nancy, if you could just maybe scroll onto that link and I'd like to show you the the video that we had done for the Tech Expo. And Tech Expo attracts many students from both seventh and eighth grade, from both of the middle schools. So ultimately, one thing that I've been very pleased with is that when we're, when we're there, the students have an have an opportunity to access a little bit of everything. And it helps them make their decision whether they want to apply or not. Our applications continue to be extremely strong. One thing that we have in 2016, you'll notice our applicant, our applications, we had over 200 students apply for Plymouth South High School for exploratory. And the rest of the individual programs at Plymouth North are listed below. As you know, and we're discussing with school committee, we don't have an exploratory program at North. But based on school committee decision last spring, we have access to programs at both schools for all students in the district. So I don't know if that's an op, if that link is active, but.
They're trying to pull it up now?
Is that good?
The annual Tech Expo at Plymouth South High School was a huge success this year. The gymnasium was transformed into several shops where incoming seventh and eighth graders could get a hands-on experience to help them decide if technical studies is the right fit for them.
So the students that are here currently really take pride in, number one, setting up for the exhibit. They come up with different ideas that they'd like to have the seventh and eighth graders do and have fun with it. At the same time, be able to answer questions that they might have. So one thing I definitely know is that our older kids certainly take a lot of pride in putting this together and making sure that each one of their shops is puts on a good show.
When you first come in, it's pretty packed. And then when you get out, it looks like a lot. But when you go to a certain station, the kids have a very good way of like making it like everything else is closed off and having us. I was really focused on everything that I came to because it was all very interesting.
A great deal of preparation goes into making this event successful. High school students from both North and South look forward to showcasing their shops and encouraging incoming freshmen to consider vocational technical studies.
So basically, what we do is we have our little booth set up and we have all sorts of things. And we show them what engineering is all about. So I've kind of been driving a robot around, which is kind of the big attraction for the kids. And you let them drive it and it's, it's a little fun. They all get a little frustrated. They whack each other's toes with it by accident, but they have a good time. We kind of bring in the cool factor of this whole like robotics thing because that's what draws people into engineering is the robots. And that's kind of like, once they get in there, they're like, oh, I want to do that. And then they have to go through everything, you know, freshman and sophomore year to get to do that, but it's well worth it.
It was a lot bigger this year, I noticed. There seemed to be more things. And it's very cool to go around and see everything. And I wasn't exactly sure that I was going to apply to the tech program when I start, when I came in today. But now I think that I might because I've seen a few things that I thought was, that I thought were interesting.
Representing the best education has to offer, the Vocational Tech Studies Program consists of over 15 technical studies, highest quality, hands-on instruction available, which includes internships, cooperative education, assignments, job placement and licensure programs.
Students will apply to either programs at North, programs at South. If you're districted for North, you can apply for exploratory here at Plymouth South High School, where you get to visit all the shops and spend time in each one before you make your decision. And that usually takes place around the end of semester one. The most important thing is that we really try to stress the fact that our students need to make sure that they fill out their applications, get those into their guidance councils. That'll be the final step. And by the end of February, all applications will be turned in. The rating sheets will be done and then we'll work through those and determine how many students we're going to accept in each program.
One of the many perks of being enrolled in the technical studies program is participation in Skills USA, which is a partnership of students and teachers working together to help students gain competence in the careers that they are pursuing.
Skills USA is a club where like students in the tech program, they can like work on their professionalism and like volunteer in the communities and also like compete with like town level or state level, then even like national level. In the last four years, I've been to districts and states. And this year, I just went to leadership, the Fall State Leadership Conference. I've done like, I have like so many memories and like different things I've done. At the Fall State Leadership Conference, I got gold in the app competition. So I never like medal before, so it's like the best day ever.
I had come to the Tech Expo and I had really liked metal foul, but I saw engineering was a thing. And I still wanted to go to North because that's where my sister was and my brother was already going to South. So I kind of wanted to do my own thing. And so I kind of saw that this was a course and I kind of jumped right at it. And I said, I've never done anything like this before. I kind of just want to see where it takes me. And so after like, after like the first week in freshman year, I like fell in love with it. So I've kind of been here ever since.
Okay, thank you. And I, sorry about that, Nancy. I just assumed that that was embedded correctly. But so one thing that we do have students that end up on the waitlist.
On this episode of PMN, we'll examine the dangers of a.
That is the most important thing is that we revisit with those students that may not have gotten in. So the criteria takes a look at their grade seven performance and half of their grade eight. So what we do to try to reach out to those students that may have not have had as well academic performance and maybe grade seven is that once they're in the high school, we set up meetings and focus groups. And we sit down with the students on the waitlist and we talk to them about what do they need to do to continue to be in a situation where they're best for them? And what might happen at the change of semester and how we can get those students into the program? I actually met with two focus groups last week and I'll be meeting with two more this week to, these are the students that are on the waitlist, to just give them that hope and just say, hey, we haven't forgotten about you. Skills USA and DECA are two extracurriculars, very popular, as you know. 200 students participated in both last year, over 100 qualified for state competition. We sent 12 students to nationals last year for DECA, which took place in Nashville. And then we had one Skills USA student officer named this year, and that is Lillian Backland. She's an electrical student. For our public services, we still take a lot of pride in providing opportunities for the public to have access to our programs, anything from regular daily service to for our patrons, such as at the culinary restaurant and the salon. But we also have done web design, we've done commercial advertisements. And we've also even spent a lot of time working with our local employers to try to get our students an opportunity to get out and actually job shadow so that they can actually see what it's like in the real world and then try to implement that back when we do public service, whether it be residential, electrical, or carpentry, that sort of thing. Our focus for our staff is on accountability. So we are continuing with our tracking competencies, which has been using the new revised 2014 frameworks. We do literacy, reading, as well as writing and presenting in vocational technical studies. Every term, we do that. So our literacy initiative that came across the district many years ago is still very alive in vocational. And then our employability workshops we do as well. All of our students will receive health and safety training. All of our freshmen receive our, their 1910 card. And then upperclassmen will take that one step further. And as far as our culinary students, they all graduate with their serve safe. One thing I want to stress real quick in terms of aligning our goals, we've always tried to align our goals to the, to the strategic plan. So our curriculum updates continue. Our increased parent and community involvement has always been something that we want to increase. So this year, we've added more parents to our advisory committee. And then Goal Three is our meaningful PD. And that meaningful PD is centered around our competency tracking and building 21st century skills. Our Seventh Annual Senior Showcase will be coming up very shortly in the May of 2017. And we, last year, we had the idea of letting North have their night at North Camp, on the North campus and have the South students have their night on the South campus. And this actually proved to be much more feasible for us. And it also provided that parents and more parents an opportunity to attend, being at the two different locations. And I think the students actually enjoyed that a lot. Our website has been updated with all the new program announcements. As we started this year, we rolled out auto collision. We also added some electives at both of the high schools. So our, all of that information, it can be found on our website. So parents just, it's a one click off of the vocational page and it gets them right into descriptions about each one of our courses that we offer. The support that we get from central office, from the middle school administration, as well as the high schools, is tremendous. But we also want to thank, obviously, the school committee because every time we've had an opportunity to request, whether it be an out-of-state event or whether it be coming to you regarding dealing with additional funding, we've certainly been able to get the support that we've needed from the school committee. We still want to do more, obviously, in the future when that allows itself to be. We're be expanding programs, adding staff. But for right now, vocational technical education is very, very, very alive and well in Plymouth. And we continue to find placement for our students, whether it be right after high school into the workforce, whether it be during the school year with employers or whether going right off to advanced training. So we really couldn't be more proud of our staff, as well as, of course, the students for all the hard work and effort that they put into the program. And when we were, you know, Chris and I just met again today prior to meeting with Mrs. Frye regarding the new building. And we're just so very excited to be able to make that transition. It's, it's going to be, it's, I'm sure you've all walked the building and have seen some of the space that we were able to have in the, in the new footprint. It's, it's going to be absolutely amazing. So we're really looking forward to that. So if you don't have any questions from Chris or myself, we'd just like to say thank you again for having us tonight.
I know. I have a, does anybody have a question or a comment? I have one of each. First question is, I, what's, you mentioned Zulama curriculum?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Okay, so the Zulama curriculum was presented at school committee a few years back. It's under the program of studies in the North Curriculum Program of Studies underneath what is called the Entertainment Academy. And the Zulama curriculum is a branch off of computer science with, deals with an introduction to gaming curriculum, two-dimensional, three-dimensional design. And we'd like to bring or adopt that curriculum in to the new high school so that we have kind of have two additional career pathways. One where students can focus on Java and programming, as well as computer science and eventually to the computer science AP. And then the other pathway would be the introduction to the gaming piece where they're designing two-dimensional, three-dimensional games. Start off with the educational games and then that builds into animation and computer design. So it's kind of like two programming avenues to get to a common goal, which is to expose more kids to computer science and programming.
Great. And then the last thing was my comment that I say every time is, and now I can say, two of my three kids have gone through a technical program or are going through. And I always quote my older son saying that with your programs, the one thing he used to say as he left the door is, at least I know two classes a day I'm going to enjoy and I'm going to do something that's engaging and that I love. And I just know both of my kids that have gone through the technical program have really enjoyed it and been, you know, involved and engaged. So I think it's a great program for anybody that gets a chance to do it. Thank you.
Yeah, we, we appreciate that. And you've made that comment a few times.
Make it all the time.
And, you know, we can't hear it enough because, you know, we, we walk around as often as we get asked that question. It's like, you know, why, why should my child do career and vocational technical education? You know, why should they go tech studies? And, you know, we can continue to have fight that stigma like, oh, you can't go to college and be part of a CVTE program. And that's certainly not right. And then, but you can also say a student might want to help pay their way through college and find a career that right after high school pays extremely well in order to help prepare themselves for post-secondary education, even if it's two-year advanced training. So we're seeing more and more students go that route. You know, for example, you take a look at the CNA program at Plymouth North High School. Every single one of the seniors are working right now. You know, they fit, that's a three-year program. We'll have medical assisting at South next year. That'll be a three-year program. And then those students in their senior year can find employment right away. And then many of them stay on as a CNA and help pay their way through nursing school, which is fantastic. So that's just a good example of that. But we had a student the other day who came back to visit us, who's working at Sagamore Plumbing. And at night, they're taking classes at Quincy College. And they would never have been able to afford to take classes at Quincy College if they had not found this awesome plumbing position at Sagamore. So, and that was a co-op job that the student had.
That's great.
So it's, there's a lot of success out there. I mean, I'm sure that I could give you a million of those examples. But we are going to highlight some of those students and some of their successes at our advisory dinner night. So you've probably received your invite. Save the date. Our guest speaker is going to focus on the non-traditional bi-gender students, students that are succeeding in a predominantly non-female populated vocation or maybe a non-male populated vocation. And talk about those students and their successes and, and why they chose that career path. So, you know, hopefully that'll be a great night for us to get everybody together. And it'll be certainly the dinner and the, as we've done in the past, which, which is great.
Thank you. And I think that you're both, are you both staying up here for the next?
One thing just to add because it came up at the, no, the last meeting. Jim and Chris have been integral, obviously, in the feasibility study with the new building, the decision about what programs, looking at the emerging trades and all that data. But also you received information on the generally the equipment of South High going over. But there's also, they've. But there's also, they've put together with the teachers, kind of an additional list by shop of what we can keep and move to the new South and some stuff that's obsolete. So we're very fortunate that Vocational's been able to support their programs over the year, but a lot of that is going. I joke that ovens are going out of Culinary, but it's very intentional and every single program by October first, they had that together as well. So that's a great use of the resources. And Mr. Baker, I always credit, there's an area, I don't know if you've noticed, outside the new building. And it came out of the, one of the design meetings we went through with the architects where the kids will ideally be able to build plum, wire onsite, learn to work in the elements, even things that truly are there. And Chris just said it in a meeting one day, so I, it's there, you'll see the cement pad. So, and it's right outside the construction cluster in the automotive. So it's kind of a neat, neat look of something that I don't think other schools have, so it's kind of exciting. But they've, the itemization was excellent. She gave you a compliment, Mr. Hannah, did you hear that? But it was great and they just sent it in and we're we're spending a lot of energy on making sure the move is fluid. And maybe we've had to look at how we purchase items with the, you know, rising economy, so to speak. And there's a lot of things that are coming that are great, so, which is good.
Yeah, Mr. Baker spends a lot of time ensuring that equipment stays up to snuff in terms of repair and maintenance. And he spends also a lot of time at Plymouth North as well because we're at that time now, after five years of the new building where we're dealing with a lot of things, but we want to make sure that equipment lasts. And when we say we're bringing over a lot of equipment to save some dollars in the budget, overall budget for the new school, we're bringing over a lot of equipment, and that's because people are taking care of it.
One of the, one of the big things that happens in every coordinated program review when the state's looking at all the vocational departments is they're, they spend a lot of time checking out how you're maintaining the equipment and what, and what measures you're using to make sure that it's up to snuff. So one good thing about that is that things like lifts that are maintained annually to keep up the specific standard also keeps that equipment in really, really good shape. Compressors that are serviced every single year where in a lot of even regular facilities, that stuff would go by the wayside because it's not right out in your face. Because of those types of things, you wind up with equipment that really, really lasts a long time where even in industry, it may not. So we've done well with that for multiple reasons, but we're reaping the benefits of that now.
Okay. So next, I guess you're both gonna stay here for this, right? Is we have the approval of the general and program advisory committees for the CTV, CVTE?
Yes, we annually present to the school committee a list of people that we have asked to sit on our program advisory committee. So the mission of the advisory committee is not only to provide us with insight and guidance on what's going on in the real world in terms of the workforce, but it's also to look at an overall analysis of our programs, our equipment, our curriculum, and also to make recommendations that we will bring back to the school committee in the spring. So ultimately, this list would be people that we've gone through, generated over time, we've added, we've crossed off, we've reached out to people in the community, we've reached out to post-secondary institutions. And we just tonight present that list for school committee approval to, in order for us to have our advisory dinner in the fall.
Great, do we have a motion?
I'll move the recommendation regarding the advisory committee.
All right, we have a motion, a second, any discussion?
Are we gonna vote electorally?
Yes.
All right, everybody can vote on their, on their computers?
Yes, they can, if they get up and do it.
Okay. And it's, yeah, it's unanimous. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Next, we have an out-of-town
No, that's the one that was canceled.
No, this is another one.
Okay, sorry about that.
Out-of-town and overnight field trip for the Plymouth International Choir.
Yes, and
Mr. Cable?
Yeah, Mr. Cable here tonight.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Evening.
Good evening.
Just taking a little bit from Dr. Sorenson's comment earlier. Remember, peak time in mental ability is in the morning. Now it's seven fifty-five.
Yeah, but you're an adult.
Can you guys hear me okay?
You're the adult, so you're on the later.
Brian, is that good?
Good, okay. Hi, thanks for having me. So I'm here tonight to propose an international field trip, very similar to the one we did in July of fifteen, where we took thirty-one Plymouth Public Schools students to the UK for the first time. It was pretty exciting. So we are back to ask for another, another gift of, of travel to the UK as part of our mission statement, as part of our strategic plan, as well as connecting with our history of the four-hundredth anniversary. So we are proposing to take thirty students in June, June twenty-ninth to twenty, excuse me, June twenty-second to twenty-ninth of seventeen. That is strategically planned five or six days after the last scheduled day of school. We are hopeful that we will have a successful trip as we did before. We, as you're aware, we had thirty, the number was a little slow last, excuse me, about twenty-two, twenty-three UK students visited us here in the end of May, beginning of June. We had a large concert on June first, a very successful concert. And so this, this trip is a continuation of that project that we started. Well, the idea started way back in twenty thirteen. So as I said, we are looking to take thirty students. They will audition. The audition process will be very similar to the way it was two years ago, where their musical ability matters, but also their character. We want them to be musical ambassadors to the UK. We will look for teacher recommendations, we will look for student essay and motivation, not just musical ability. If you take a look at the proposal, we look to fly out around the twenty-second. We'll do very similar activities, but not exactly the same as we did two years ago. We have an opportunity to have another pretty large performance on June twenty-fourth, where we will perform with the Legacy Choir on, on the top of the Ho that they, that they have in Plymouth UK as part of the National Armed Forces Day of the UK. It's a pretty large event, and there's a lot of different performances and demonstrations there. And we have been invited to perform with the Legacy Choir on the Ho as well. We will provide historical and cultural experiences for our students. We will provide another major concert at the Guild Hall in Plymouth as we had in twenty fifteen, where we perform with the Legacy Choir as well. And return to London on the twenty-ninth and fly back to Boston, hopefully the evening of the twenty-ninth. I have attached approximate costs for the trip, and these are approximate. The fabulous news is that the cost per student is down about four hundred dollars from two years ago. There's a number of factors for that, one being the cost of airline tickets at this point projected out to June. The second would be the structure in which we're going to operate this trip. As I said, we had about twenty or so students stay in Plymouth in May. We provided a structure where we had homestays and the students from the UK stayed with our home host families. And our chaperones stayed with host families. They, our leadership in Plymouth UK is eager to provide us that, our students the same opportunity and provide homestays for our students as well. They were very happy with the way that went. Culturally, I think it's an enriching experience where students stay, stay in the homes. Of course, you know, over the last few years, we've been creating great relationships with people over there in the musical community and the educational community. And we are confident that they will find us great hosts that will be vetted just very, very similar way we vetted our host families. So the great news is that the cost is down. We have an approximate payment plan as we, as we have before to try to break that up for families. We will do a ton of fundraising, both group fundraising, possibly individual fundraising for students. But I'm also happy to say that we'll, we'll have the ability to offer scholarships this, this year. So we will be able to offer possibly up to two full scholarships, if not more partial scholarships. And what we are, what we are going to do, if this trip is approved, is we are going to reach out. See, the difficulty is, it's a little bit of an arduous process to apply musically and so forth. So we will work with our music teachers, we will work with our building principals to help identify students who may have a willingness and ability, but may not be so eager to get to the parent information setting, a meeting that we're gonna have or get to audition. But we're gonna try to work to identify them before that that timeline happens to encourage them and let them know about this scholarship opportunity for, for our families here in Plymouth. And we're pretty excited about that. We will, as always, work to, again, fundraise and reduce that cost of the thirteen twenty-five. So that's thirteen hundred twenty-five dollars for one week in Plymouth UK, flight, food, housing, amazing experiences. And I really think that number is high, and I think we can get that number down as well. So we, we recognize that as being in, sometimes of an issue or a barrier. And, and we don't, we want to work to reduce that barrier as much as we, as we possibly can to give all types of students the opportunity. We have, we are targeting grades six through nine this year, current grades six through nine, ninth grade being the class of twenty twenty. We have, as a group, as a musical group and an administrative group, decided that this is for new students, this is for students who have not traveled before. Of course, if they sang with us here in, in May and June as part of the large choir, but didn't travel, of course, they're able to, to apply and audition. But this is a wonderful opportunity and we really want to expand that to as many students as possible. We have all, all thirty-one last time I still see and talk to and say hello to, and they're amazing, amazing students. And I think many of them, and I know the families that I've talked to, are also in support of that decision, opening that door to, to, to new families and new students in Plymouth. I think that's about the gist of it. We, we're excited to be able to continue this, this program and this opportunity for students. So I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have about this proposed opportunity.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan?
Well, I'd like to say I compliment you on the effort you put into this and both making it cultural and making it affordable. I'm really on board with doing this trip.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Dr. Sorenson?
I echo fellow school committee members' comment. I especially like the idea that, that you will privately, of course, speak to an individual student who perhaps cannot afford it and say, work with us, and that's, that's so important for us to hear that.
Thank you.
It's a great, it's, the report we got back last year after you all, you all went was fantastic. It's a great field trip and I'm sure it's gonna get support. Just one, just one minor comment. I noticed that the application doesn't have Mr. Costin's signature on it. And all, and all field trips will require his signature on it from this point forward.
We wait until we get the approval of school committee before signing it at central office.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
No, bye.
Anyone? Mr. Morgan?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the field trip as submitted.
Second by Mrs. Burgess, any discussion? Okay, we can vote on our, someone's gonna say on our key pads. There you go.
Have to get back there, sorry.
Sync it up, yeah, you'll be fine.
It's almost there.
Did I vote?
Yep, you did.
Yeah, good.
Here we are, okay, I was, I was on the wrong screen.
All right, it's unanimous, approved.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, really appreciate the support.
Yep, we look forward to hearing more.
Have a good evening.
Okay. Next, we have Dr. Miasis with Superintendent Goals.
Good evening, everyone. I think the opportunities that we have with the four-hundredth and the Plymouth International Choir attending is, is a wonderful, long-term goal that we have as a district. And it's really difficult when you put goals together, how you're gonna really narrow down goals that become the focus area. Tonight, I have five goals that I want to review with you tonight for your approval. I did add a cover page to the goals, identifying exactly, a breakout of exactly what the sections are intended to do. And one thing that I did add also is looking at extending some of the goals that I've had in the past to more than one year of duration because of the complexities of the programming behind it. So as we walk through the goals, I will identify those components that do have a multi-year flair to them. And also walk through the goal statements and the achieve piece and how I will do the, or attempt to accomplish these goals and also the timeline and the as-measured piece. So I did break those out so you have a good understanding of what that is. With that said, I'll walk through each goal, at the end of the goal, I'll open it up for questions or any comments that you, that you do have. I did mention earlier this summer that we have been selected by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Department to undergo a comprehensive district accountability review. We were informed that we'll have a team visiting the Plymouth School District from March sixth to the twelfth. And they will be here and they will be walking through six different areas. And those, those areas are gonna focus on leadership and governance, curriculum and instruction, assessment, human resources, professional development, student support and financial and asset management. So a great deal of our programs will be under review by the Department of Education. We will, we have identified our two people that are gonna be the direct liaisons to the Department of Education. Principal, Assistant Superintendent Frye and Dr. Campbell are gonna be working with the Department of Ed to work on scheduling, to work on logistics when they come, and exactly what they're gonna need from us on specific pieces during the visit. It's a very comprehensive review. And what we will be doing is, is walking through a number of documents that they will request prior to the visit. So we will be uploading or sending documents for them to take a look at regarding to the six areas that I mentioned before. School districts that are Level Two and Three get selected to, to go under a review of this nature. Ironically, we were notified last week that the Plymouth School District will undergo the Coordinated Program Review next year. So we will go right from this review to the Coordinated Program Review next year, which really does take a look at a lot of programming. You know, the vocational program will also be part of that next year. But we'll have two years in a row of review by the Department of Education. So to achieve the goal, I will collaborate with key stakeholders to prepare for the district review process. And key stakeholders are people that have relative responsibility and oversight and implementation of the six areas that I discussed earlier. Collaborate with the Department of Ed, they really would like to work on a significant schedule to bring this timeline to completion because what they want to do is come in and make sure they get all their work done. And, and they will follow with the report down, down the road. And then we just want to make sure that all our policies and procedures relative to the six areas are where they need to be. We feel very good that we have done a really good job of maintaining and keeping our policies, procedures regarding those six areas in, in compliance. So we'll be collecting whatever they would like to see. I will do this by assembling appropriate evidence representing the practice and policy of the district, facilitating meetings and opportunities for documentation collection and gathering of district review documentation for, for the team. And meeting all timelines established by the Department of Education. They were pretty clear that these dates are, are set, they will be here. And we anticipate this school to be complete by March twenty seventeen. And the Department of Education will then follow up with a And the Department of Education will then follow up with a report that will be shared with school committee as to the findings. The report will identify areas that they feel that we are in compliance and we're doing a good job with, but they will also highlight things that may need a look at, that may need revision, or may need some level of attention. So that will be shared with the school committee as soon as it does come in. And also, they want to make sure that we are, that we are in compliance, and we'll have those in place before they come. Our goal is to make sure that we're prepared for the visit, and we do a great deal of interpretation of what they're looking for and what documents that we have in district that are really meeting the line of what they're looking for. So we will do that. And the ultimate goal is successful completion, that we go through this and we come out looking and presenting, and feeling really good that we are in compliance with what the Department of Ed would like us to be doing regarding the six areas that I mentioned before. So I will provide an update in December as to how we're doing, and bring that information to the committee in a goal statement or progress statement. And then in March 2017, I'll give you, hopefully give you a preview of what they said, because they will have an exit interview when they leave, and we'll have an opportunity to find out exactly what they believe we are doing well, and what they believe we may need some work at. But my goal is to be as prepared as we possibly can, so that we can really accurately highlight the operations of our district in the areas identified. So with that said, Madam Chair, I'll turn it back to you for questions or comments regarding the first goal.
Thank you, Dr. Miestis. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
No.
That was easy.
All right, moving on. The second goal is relative to opening day. And I, every year, I start off with a theme, and I think this year, there seems to be a great deal of energy behind it, a great deal of enthusiasm behind people demonstrating how we, as a school district, we as individual buildings across the district, how classrooms and students and faculty members really help with this concept of determination, resilience, and the theme was grit. So what this goal is centered around is trying to provide opportunities and working with opportunities throughout the school year to involve students and our faculty throughout the district to really stand for what we believe is determination as a school district, and as we, and how it relates to the individual students. This year, at opening day, you had the opportunity to hear one of our students talk about how she felt it was important to bring what she experienced to me, and how she believed that if things are happening in this country that we believe are not correct, how do we stand together and how do we cause change? So that conversation with that young lady really got me to think about, are we providing enough opportunities for our students to be able to understand that when there are difficult times in our life, we can choose to do two things, or maybe a number of things, but there are two things I want to focus on tonight. One is we can just watch it and just let it happen, or are we going to take a leadership role and do something about it? So my goal too for this year is to take a look at how we, as a school district, can meet with key stakeholders, the Plymouth educational community, to devise opportunities for students to become involved in leadership opportunities. Not only leadership opportunities, but to find avenues that they believe our community can be more engaged in, to really cause change, and also determine programming opportunities for students to be involved. So not only putting kids together, helping them identify what they are passionate about, but how do we align them with some of the things or some of the community leaders that we can really cause this impact, to cause change? And then determine some benchmarks for implementation. So not only are we going to try to look at, you know, who these students are, what are the issues that are happening out there, how do we align students with interest to be able to go out and, you know, cause this change across our district? And then, how do we make this so that it continues to move from year to year to year? Because one of the things that you see with goals and even with momentum in a school district, we have to continue to inspire students to become more involved in their lives, be more involved with what happens in our community. So this goal is really centered around really trying to help our students to realize that they are change agents, but how do we help them to determine that they have to be passionate about those pieces, but yet we need to help them and mentor them along the way to become successful at it? And I will do this by clarifying the intent of the goal to the stakeholders, identifying the community partners, and working towards their involvement, engaging faculty and staff in the process of promoting and sponsoring opportunities for student engagement, engaging parents and parent groups to assist in alignment of opportunities, and resource to accomplish this particular goal. And I'm going to look into the possibility of looking at grants that can help us to really put some monetary resources to helping some of our students to accomplish some of these long-term change movements that we'd, I'd like to see. And I hope that we can engage our students with the benchmarks I've discussed, and we see some progress for kids to be actively involved in our community, you know, by June 2017. With that said, I believe this is one of those areas that we need to find more and more and more of our students that are passionate to really be the change that we want to see in our society and in our world. And I hope that by June, we can start to have examples, clear examples of students that are in our community that are really causing some change to take place. And as measured by, you know, the opportunities that we develop for our youth, identification of faculty and staff involved through the use of data. So my goal is to really look at how many people we bring to the table, how many staff we bring to the table, how many community members we bring to the table, and really collect that data to really demonstrate where we were. Right now, we have a concept, but how do we show that data, through data, that we do have a number of people working towards this? And identification of community involvement through the use of data, well, how many people know that these students are actually doing what we believe is, that they're capable of doing, and how do we collect that and share that data? And the other one is, you know, grant application and attainment, that we go out and look for grants and actually get them. Keep in mind that as measured by our examples of success, or examples of how we're going to accomplish that, but keep in mind, there are many more benchmarks that will determine if we're making a level of progress. When I was putting this together, I remember sitting with Ms. Dargan, she was asking me about this goal, and I tell you, I'm so passionate about getting our youth to stand for what they believe. I think it's an important time. I think there's no better time to really ask our youth to help to be part of a significant community involvement, community change. So I turn it back to you, Madam Chair, for comments and questions.
I know, I, does anybody else have a, I have a quick question. Do you have, would you like to go first? All right. My question is, I know in the past that we've talked about community service learning, and right now, it's really just the National Honor Society that's required to do it. And I know even with Mrs. Frye and our school council meetings, we've talked about it. If you make it mandatory, it might not be something that they're passionate about, and I know it's a thin line, but, you know, maybe this can evolve into something like that. And then the other part to that was, I know when I take students to Washington, D.C. with me to lobby every year, what an amazing, eye-opening experience it is for the students to hear directly from the legislators that they can make a change. And, you know, I, in my head, I was thinking, well, you know, we bring in bullying people, we bring in drug and alcohol people, we could bring in some, something like that. But our legislators, our local legislators could come in cost-free and do some kind of a forum with our students, and maybe if our students can see that change can be made even through that avenue, maybe it's something that we could get our local legislators more involved in.
One of the things that I was talking to one of our students, the one that spoke at opening day, during a meeting we had, Dr. Campbell was there, and a group of involved people. I said, you know, when, I go all over this community talking about what I believe is, you know, is best for kids, and what we need to do to promote things that are good for kids. You know, when she first talked to me, she said to me very clearly that everyone's always telling us that we are the future. But she asked me very clearly, well, can you tell me, can you help me figure out what it is that we need to do and how to do it? And I think we have a lot of kids in our schools that want to become involved. I think they just want to be guided and have a mentor that will help them to understand exactly how to navigate change. And I think we have a lot of students, in my view, that would welcome the opportunity to be part of that. Now, how do we harness it and how do we keep it? And, you know, I'm encouraged by what our youth are doing, and I don't know that our communities in general know that we have a solid group of youngsters that can take responsibility and do some fascinating things in our community. So hopefully, this will help us to begin the conversation and carry it through.
Dr. Sorenson?
Clearly, an excellent, an excellent goal. It's hard for me to conceptualize, how do we harness it? How do we sustain it? And it's hard for me to conceptualize what exactly, what are the pragmatics of it? What will the student actually experience and practice and do? I think it's a great idea, but I just can't get my brain around it.
Well, let me give you an example. We, I'll give you just a preview of a presentation that I was at here in this space this summer. We worked with the YMCA Summer, it was a leadership group that the YMCA ran for the school district. We wrote a grant through the Makepeace Corporation, and it was a grant to implement a summer Leadership Institute for students in the school district. And these were middle school students that were recommended by the principals to, that seemed to have a thread within their background of leadership, but also needed to experience some level of confidence. So those students were selected, they had the opportunity to work with the leadership of the YMCA, and designated mentors that ran through a program in the summer of finding out how these students were interested and passionate about their life and leadership. They paired them up with a number of campers up at the YMCA, and they became the mentors for the little campers, for the small campers. But what was interesting is, the program that we engaged in with the YMCA was very clearly designed to be able to present situations and scenarios with mentors, and then they were able to practice and use those within the program. So what we're thinking of doing, and we believe that there will be some level of momentum, is design a program that would exist in our high schools, that we would go out and recruit high school students that have a potential to be leaders in our community. And we would work with them through a program, through programming, to understand what the skills you need to become a leader, how you advocate for yourself, how do you advocate for others, how do you put together a proposal and actually carry it through? And then we would align them with other students, so that they can help to mentor them. You know, so we're going to really look at doing this at both schools, and trying to create that groundswell of leadership in our community, not only identify the students, but train them, so that we can allow them to realize that not only can they think of an idea, but they can take the idea from concept to reality.
It reminds me, I remember when former selectman Anthony Schenna presented a town meeting, and what he presented was, he told his daughters that if you want to follow this through, there are many steps. And I was very impressed with, very impressed with that approach, and just sort of saying the same thing.
Well, you know, I think the partnership that we have with many agencies and community organizations, they're all looking for opportunities to engage. And I think, you know, like I told this young lady, I can go out and tell people all day long what I would like for them to do. When kids say it, they get it. When I say it, people think about it.
That's right, so true.
So how do we get these community leaders that really want to do things? Let the kids tell them, and I'll tell you, they will get support and they will get motivated. And on top of that, one of the things that I realized with the middle school leadership graduation night that we had here, is the confidence level of the students from beginning to the end is through the roof. And that's what I believe our students need to feel, so that they're not afraid to go out and cause that change, in a positive way. You know, we want them to be leaders, but yet we want them to do it with background, skill, determination, and confidence. So that's, I believe, is a significant piece of the theme for the year, but I think it's an important goal for us, and I tell you, there are, schools are jumping on it, and they're forming different ways of interpreting, but I think you'll hear more and more about that as the year goes on.
Do you have one more, right? No, is that it?
Okay.
There's one more, yeah.
All right. The next one is, actually, there's three more. Maybe you didn't scroll bad enough, but...
I was wondering. I know, you could say one.
I know, I said...
The next goal is really is a continuation of last year's goal, which is the issue that we're dealing with, with the whole opiate issue and awareness. And really, the biggest add to this is, if you go down to the "I will do this" by, there's a new organization that we are working with through PYDC, and that's the Substance Abuse Prevention Collaborative. That's coalition, not collaborative, correct? Coalition? Collaborative. You know, even I get confused with the, all the acronyms. And that, this is a grant-funded opportunity that is working with Middle Borough, Carver and Plymouth, to really put together programming for youth. And if you have noticed, there are meetings that take place, there was one last week, but it's really looking at developing opportunities to get programs in place for youth in and around our community. And this is something that I think we're very passionate about. And not only is it providing opportunities, but I'd like to see, how do we get more support for our families? One of the things that we find more and more as the years have gone by, is that our families, we have more and more grandparents that are becoming more involved in raising their grandchildren. I went to, I provided a presentation on Friday over at the Senior Center, and one of the, I met with about twenty-five gentlemen early in the morning, and I can tell you, their clock starts early, so they're well wide awake. But one of the gentlemen was very, very passionate about having an opportunity at the Senior Center for the school district to sponsor a meeting for grandparents. And it was to sponsor a meeting for grandparents to figure out how they can navigate becoming parents again, because they have assumed the responsibility of their grandchildren, raising their grandchildren, as simple as filling out the forms, going online, lunch, how does lunch work? I mean, I had a lot of questions from one person that didn't have any grandchildren that he was taking care of, but friends that he is very close with, that they are in a position where they're raising children. And I said, absolutely, we'd love to have the opportunity to align resources. But again, I think there are many, many splinter-type of issues... again, I think there are many, many splinter type of issues that we have in our community. And I think our group will continue to look at opportunities to help this population. And I will give you an update in December. And my goal for 2017 is just providing and demonstrating to the community that there's a need, but more importantly, what are we doing to try to help our families to navigate through some of these difficult times? I'll turn it back to you, Madam Chair.
Any questions? Okay.
The next one is relative to district improvement and that's really looking at how we continue to enhance our communication. I'm not sure how many of you realize that we changed the look and feel of the Voyager Express. It's in a more readable format. And one of the things that we decided to do was to listen to our community and our readers. And they really wanted to find out if there was a way to make our Voyager Express weekly newsletter more user-friendly, because the way it was designed was more for a computer desktop, not for a smart device. But we found out that, you know, with an iPad or even a smartphone, it's really difficult to navigate the news. So we changed that and will continue to refine that as the year goes through. Not only are we changing the Voyager Express, but we're changing the look and feel and the delivery means of the Voyager magazine. We're going to go 100% electronic and we're going to have our quarterly Voyager magazine distributed through our email system. And what I like about the transition, I know it really is, in my view, really determining if, if people are reading. And one of the things that was, or items that's difficult for us with the hard copy edition is we'd have no idea, understanding, knowing who's reading the magazine. So by going electronic, we have the opportunity to actually find out what articles they read, how many clicks each section has, and we can present that data so we can really understand what people want to see. We also have the ability within the electronic version to do, you know, one or two question surveys throughout the year on key issues that may come up to get feedback. But we believe that we're going to be a little bit smarter about how we deliver the magazine, but make it more user-friendly and also on terms of our current population. Our parents really seem to want things more electronic. So I think that's a huge change. But on the other side, it really helps us to really identify and track user usability, which is something that it's real hard to do with a piece of paper. And so we're making that change. We should have the first edition out within three weeks, which is exciting for us. We, you know, another benefit for electronic distribution is when it's done, we send it. With paper distribution, it has to be printed and assembled and then distributed. So, and that does take time. So the school committee will, we will do the first run, we'll send that out to the committee, and then we'll send it to the rest of the community so you have an opportunity to see it before everybody else. All right? And we will continue to work at providing data on how our families are engaging with what we're doing in the district, which is something that it's, to me, it's really important to really understand what their concerns are and how we can get information to them on the terms of their life, which is really, as we realize, to be more electronic. I'll give you an update in December and I believe by March, we should have some significant data on how we're really becoming more impactful with communication. And the last goal is continuing to work at Plymouth South High School, I think. Excuse me, I'll turn it back to you, Madam Chair, for comments.
Any questions on?
Just a clarification. So, school committee members, we will look for the Voyager in our email sometime before Thanksgiving.
You will get it within the next three weeks.
Okay.
First up.
Great.
Okay.
Anyone else?
If you're finding mistakes, get back. No mistakes. We have very competent people helping me to get this out, so you should see it first. All right? All right. Goal five is, is really trying to get to a point where South High School is move-in ready. And I say move-in ready because that's where we start even more work. And some of the discussion we had tonight with Mr. Baker and Mr. Hannah on moving, not only do we need to move furniture and equipment and books and so on, we have a lot of large apparatus and phasing of all of that removal. So this is going to be a much more substantial move and prepared project than North was because of the vocational aspect and setup. It's, it's very cumbersome. In addition, one of the things that we were able to do at South High School was we were able to replicate the technology that was put into North. Well, some of that technology has to be removed and then into South. So there's a great deal of phasing and a great deal of preparedness and, you know, a lot of people are going to have to be on their A-game to make sure that come September, we're going to, we're going to have that school ready to go when the doors open. Keep in mind, we're going to be working diligently with Arthur Montron, our Facilities Director, Mr. Costin, to make sure that all equipment that is not reused, recycled in the new building that we actually hold on to that equipment and then send it to auction, if it's something that we believe that is not going to be reusable within the district. So we're also planning on distributing by priority any equipment that can be reused in any one of our buildings. So the schools that don't have will get something that we can redistribute. But after that process is done, we're going to then look at how we can maybe auction off or sell off some of that equipment that we are not going to be using. And we don't want to store it and have it there for 30, 40 years and let it just sit there. So our goal is to, is to really manage all this, work with Ted Gentry and Associates, which we really, our primary responsible person, there's Tom Finnegan, he is really helping to drive a lot of what we're doing. And then, you know, we also have to please the MSBA, because the MSBA is a partner with us and making sure that we meet their timelines. And, you know, as of today, we are on target, we are being reimbursed on schedule. You know, all of the database collection for equipment is being recorded, timelines are being established. But again, all this has to be done by September 2018. And keep in mind, after September, we still have the fields to complete, so we will, we will have more discussion on how that's going to, going to move forward. And it's, it's not going to end this summer. It will continue and we have a lot of work to do beyond. So as measured by, we'll be meeting with, you know, with our construction team to meet timelines, which we are and we have, and our goal is to maintain that timeline. Minutes of construction meetings, as you, you will see that if there are difficulty pieces, I will highlight those as we do moving forward, report to you. And then we'll be using our social media updates to the community when key benchmarks are going to take place. And I know this is probably in September, but we're going to have a ripping cutting that we need to plan for, for right when we get back to school. We won't do it over the summer, we'll do it when kids are back in, the band is tuned up and ready to go. It'll be a September.
It's better when the kids are there.
It's much better.
It is.
It was much better.
It is.
So with that said, back to you, Madam Chair.
All right. Does anybody have any questions? Oh, Mrs. Burgess.
I defer to Mrs. Burgess.
Either way, I was just going to ask, we also have to make a move from, for the administration to the Old Town Hall.
The new Town Hall is slated to open around the same time.
Yes, that's what I meant.
In September.
It's all coming at the same time.
We, we, we're going to have to do a walkthrough evaluation and have some level of itemized list of things that we believe need to be complete before we walk into Town Hall. Just cursory, carpet, painting, cleaning, there are going to have to be some, some walls put up to divide spaces. And also, the hope is, is that it's pretty much cleaned out. So we have to, you know, we won't know until they actually move out as to the condition of it. As you know, when you, when you, when you go look at a house and it's, and it has furniture in it and then the people move out, it doesn't look the same.
Yeah.
So we're going to have to, what we'd have to provide to the school committee, and I anticipate that we'll do this, is provide a timeline to the committee as to when we believe our move date will be. I would say it will probably be more during one of our breaks. I don't believe it'll be in September. It'll probably be two, three months down the road. But we will do it when it is feasible for us and it will be least disruptive to the working environment of our, of our, of our office. So again, that'll be something that I will present to the committee, have a great conversation at our winter retreat and also in our summer retreat of how things are shaping up with that.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Morgan?
No, I was just going to comment how I appreciate the maintaining of the equipment itself and reusing what could be reused. You know, I think maybe we had a reputation in the past in not doing that and it's really nice to hear that we're utilizing the equipment that we have and maintaining it and moving over when it makes sense. So I want to say thank you for, for that endeavor.
Well, you know, one of the things that I, I have a background in the trades and I'll tell you, personally, I would take a 15-year-old tool over a new one. And there's great value to taking relevant, good quality equipment that's been well-maintained and reintegrate it. And I'll tell you, our tradespeople will tell you, you know, give me a 20-year-old Delta table saw over something you get down the road, it's just not the same.
Right. You get the bells and whistles, but it doesn't last as long.
Absolutely. And they, one of the things that was brought up tonight, which is a benefit to, to the vocational program, when you talk about the CPR walkthrough by, you know, by the Department of Ed, they look at everything to make sure that things are operational, they're safe. And that process has helped to keep these machines so that they're really workable. If they're not workable, we don't use them anymore. And they'll come to the table for discard or removal.
Baker's number one.
Yes, absolutely.
And he sits over there.
All right. Anybody else? I think this is an action item, so do we have a motion?
A move that we approve the goals as presented.
Second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Morgan. Any discussion? Okay. I can vote.
I'm not in the right page.
This is working pretty smoothly now.
Yeah, except that I'm not, where am I?
I'm going to go back up to the top. You have to go further.
Up here?
Yeah. Scroll your thing all the way up.
Oh, all right. I'm not used to, I'm a...
There you go.
Oh, there it is. I'm a Mac person.
In Mrs. Burgess's defense, when we follow a presentation, sometimes we get off the screen of the meeting, then we have to go back on the meeting screen during the meeting.
All right. So we should be, everybody is voting?
It didn't, I did, yeah, I did it.
There you go.
Finally.
We're in. Success.
All right. It's unanimous. And next, I have a request for a five-minute break.
Who made that request?
We did.
It really wasn't me, although I was very thankful for the break. So we take a quick five minutes?
You want to say what I wrote there?
Good. All right. So we'll move on to the next item. School fundraisers. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the fundraiser report? No?
No.
All right. So then we just go on to committee, committee reports. Anybody have anything to report? Mr. Morgan?
I'll just report, I attended the sixth grade barbecue here at PCIS and it was, it was beautiful weather. You couldn't order a nicer day. And it was just well-attended and it was just a nice event for the parents, for the kids. And the teachers all were out there cooking hamburgs and hot dogs and it was, it was very nice. Saw Mr. Campbell there, so it was a nice event and I'm glad I had an opportunity to attend.
Anybody else?
I have two, two quick things. I, I attended the Plymouth North School Council as a parent, not as a school committee liaison. And Mrs. Trichelli was there as well. And it went really well. There were a lot of people there. The hot topic was the parking and the, you know, what they're doing with the, the remote locations and that seemed to be, you know, the answers everybody got was satisfactory. And then I went to the open house for Plymouth North. I know Mr. Campbell, I saw Mr. Campbell in the hallways. And it looked like it went, it went really smoothly. It's hard to visit eight classrooms in two hours. But I did notice, my daughter being a sophomore, how little parents I saw in the classrooms. The one class that was full, I said to, I came home, I said, your math class was packed, but there were maybe two or three parents in every other class. And my daughter said, there's all freshmen in my math class. So that's why. That's why. It was, it was very noticeable how many more parents were in her math class than the rest. And she has a lot of freshmen in that class. So I did, I did notice, I don't know, you were in the same situation, Mr. Campbell? Or Dr. Campbell?
I think it was, I think it was a mix. Had pretty good attendance in most of them, but some of them were, were less than populated. And I think the teachers were greatly appreciative of the parents that did attend.
Absolutely.
One thing that I can say, and I heard it from many parents, so, you know, I'm sort of reflecting as a parent and as an administrator, very impressed by the presentations and the communication and just the amount of information that the teachers presented to the parents about not only how they communicate, but what they communicate and sort of try to bring them into the day and the life of a student in their classroom. I heard on several occasions, at least three or four occasions, both in the classrooms and in the hallways, how so many parents had, boy, I wish I was in school these days because they were so impressed by what they heard. So it was a very good night. It was very good night.
Absolutely, and I agree. I was, I was very impressed with all the teachers that I met with. So, great. Anybody else? No? All right, moving on. Next we have, I'm not as quick.
PYDC.
Yes, PYDC report.
And I couldn't go to that one, so I was not available. And Dennis was to go to that, so I don't know whether he did.
Mr. Baker wasn't able to attend, but I can speak to it. I know we don't have the notes from, from the secretary who takes the notes, but that should be coming at the next meeting. But that was September 16th, I believe, was the last meeting. The next meeting will be October 14th. But at the last meeting, it really is probably one of the most well-attended meetings that, that I go to and I know Dr. Myssis goes to as well. Just a great group of stakeholders from the community. At that particular meeting, we focused on revisiting the mission statement of PYDC to make sure that it was true to what the committee felt as an organization, as a collaborative, we were working on, and in fact, that was the case. The website is being updated, so we, once that goes live, we'll release that when it's ready and show, and share with that with the committee here. Another piece that we need to work on is general membership. But in order to really do that effectively, the committee feels that, one, we have to have a strategic plan for PYDC. So they, you know, we reviewed the mission statement, there are three strategic areas that the committee wants to work on for this year and probably for the years to come. The first being treatment and support, what's available, how can people get involved? There's a number of stakeholders, as I said, that provide both treatment and support at PYDC. So educating and coming up with a strategic plan regarding that one initiative. The other is engagement and involvement of our youth, kind of getting back to what Dr. Myssis said as well, giving them an opportunity to engage in the mission of PYDC, not just at the meetings, but in the tangible activities that take place within the community. So that will be something that will be worked on within the group. And then the other one is education and awareness. And those are a lot of the activities that take place, whether it's the social host liability, it's the student, the photo voice... take place, whether it's the social host liability, it's the student, the photo voice project that was done at the high school last year, or other seminars and workshops that are presented throughout the community with the help of the organizations. As Dr. Myasas already mentioned, PYDC has also joined forces with Carver and Middle Borough Carvers. Version of PYDC is called Carver Cares, and Middle Borough is Middle Borough Matters, so they have a smaller group that meets to do similar initiatives. Chief Bo Terry has done a lot of work with their police departments, so it's been a great collaboration with the police, but now also with the Substance Abuse Collaboratives. So the Substance Abuse Prevention Collaborative, or SAPS, as it's commonly referred to, is a drug-free community partnership grant collaboration, which Plymouth happens to be a part of now. So it's a great opportunity for PYDC to join Carver Cares and Middle Borough Matters. So our next meeting, as I said, is on October 14th, and we'll be working on more tangible action items for the upcoming year.
Thank you.
And next we have building committee? Is that right?
Yes, I think we reported on the last time. The next building committee meeting is a week from Thursday.
It hasn't come up yet, it'll be a week from, yeah.
Okay, personnel reports.
We still are busy with appointing people and things of that nature. There have been five certificated appointments, nine classified appointments, one leave of absence, and six resignations. So still been busy and shifting around.
Welcome to your new position, right? All right, and then we have the accounts payable warrant, Mrs. Burgess.
Yes. Whereas school committee members have been provided with a copy of the cost center transfer and transaction summary report and the warrants for review, I move that the school committee accept and approve the report and F-17 accounts payable warrant, number S-100616, dated October 6, 2016, in the amount of $1,382,621.27.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, you can go ahead and vote.
Here it goes.
And it's unanimous. All right, and we just had one more. And the next item is the home education plans. Do we have a motion, or do we, do you have to address that?
Yes, tonight, we have four home education plans that have been reviewed by Dr. Halpin's office, and they have met all the requirements necessary for approval for homeschool education in Plymouth, and I recommend approval.
I move the recommendation of administration.
Dr. Sorensen moves. Second by Mr. Morgan. Any discussion? And we can vote. And it's approved. And that's it. It is 8:59, and the meeting is adjourned.